I'm going to call the September 15th, 2014 City Council Regular Meeting to Order, and ask all of those who would like to join myself in the council in the Pledge of Allegiance to please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have two items of special business this evening. The first Agenda Bill 6883, Eastside Mayor's Month of Concern for the Hungry Proclamation. And I thought I saw Cory a little...there you are, okay. So this is a proclamation. Whereas our cities of Kirkland, Redmond, Bellevue, Issaquah, Samamish, and Mercer Island recognize adequate nutrition as a basic goal for each citizen, and whereas no parent should have to send a child to school hungry, no baby should be without the comfort of the feeding needed for mental and physical growth, no elderly person's health should be jeopardized by lack of appropriate food, and whereas food banks, emergency and hot meal programs, working with our cities, local churches, social services agencies, and hundreds of volunteers are striving day in and day out to stem the rising tide of hunger, but still need more help, and whereas we believe that when the citizens who are not involved hear of the especially desperate need of the hungry as winter approaches and their low incomes must stretch to cover increasing fuel, electricity, and rental costs, leaving even less money for monthly food purchase, an outpouring of community assistance will follow. And whereas the emergency feeding program of Seattle and King County coordinates an annual food drive to help support the efforts of their program and the area's food banks in fighting hunger, which will be held at grocery stores throughout King County on Saturday, September 27, 2014, and whereas the cities of Kirkland, Redmond, Bellevue, Issaquah, Samamish, and Mercer Island would like to extend this effort into an entire month of concern for the hungry beginning on September 13, 2014, now therefore I, Fred Butler, Mayor of the City of Issaquah, do hereby proclaim September 13 to October 11, 2014, as the Eastside Month of Concern for the hungry in the city of Issaquah, and strongly urge all citizens to join emergency feeding program, Hopeling Renewal Food Bank, Issaquah Food Bank, and Mercer Island Food Pantry, and the ARAS Foundation to share what they can to nourish those that are hungry. In witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and seal of the City of Issaquah this 15th day of September, 2014. And so here Cory is.
Thank you.
And if you have any remarks you'd like to make, please go ahead.
On behalf of the Issaquah Food and Clothing Bank and the clients that we serve, I would just like to thank the City of Issaquah for all their support that they give the food bank. I'd also like to let everybody know that our first month, which was the 13th, this last Saturday, we collected 6,880 pounds of food and almost $600. So thank you for the support and the rest of the month. We're optimistic that it will continue to grow. Thank you.
And thank you for all you do, Cory.
Thanks, Fred.
And the next item of special business is Agenda Bill 6887, Drive Electric Week Proclamation. And with that, I would call a representative of our Drive Electric folks forward. Come on up. And so you may have noticed coming into council chambers in the evening, some electric cars parked out front, some pretty snappy vehicles. The one I really liked the best is the yellow Tesla, but I could not talk the owner of that into letting me take it for a spin around the back, so block. So the proclamation is follows: Whereas petroleum-fueled vehicles are responsible for more than 50% of greenhouse gas emissions in the region and are a major contributing factor to air pollution, surface water pollution, and climate change, threatening the health of our citizens, economy, environment, and the sustainability of our planet, and whereas the reliance on petroleum resources escalates gasoline prices, burdens commerce and economic growth, stresses national security, and impacts our citizens, and whereas supporting clean energy technology, including plug-in electric vehicles, will reduce our dependence on foreign fuels and will support a healthy local environment and economy, and whereas the city of Issaquah is dedicated to being a leader in the use of clean energy and low-carbon fuels, establishing policies and programs that conserve energy, protect the natural environment, improve transportation efficiency, and promote sustainability, and whereas September 15 through the 21, 2014, has been designated National Drive Electric Week throughout the United States, and to educate our citizens about the benefits of plug-in electric vehicles and to promote their adoption, now therefore I, Fred Butler, Mayor of the City of Issaquah, do hereby proclaim September 15 through 21 to be Drive Electric Week. In the City of Issaquah, I call upon all residents of this great city to join me in supporting the aims and goals of this effort to create a sustainable future for our community. In witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and seal of the City of Issaquah this 15th day of September, 2014. And so with that, here is a proclamation for you and your folks. And if you have a couple of words you would like to say, please.
Thank you very much, Mayor Butler. That was beautiful. I really appreciate being here today because Issaquah is a model of sustainability. That's why we're here. The Drive Electric Week showcases electric vehicles all over the country to talk about how sustainable driving can help save the planet, save the community, save the economy, just about everything. And we chose Issaquah to come and showcase electric vehicles. We'll be doing that this weekend. This coming Sunday, the Triple X Root Beer will be the place where all the electric vehicles gather. It's already known for being the place where car enthusiasts from all over the region come to show off their vehicles. This time, it's going to be all about electric driving. And what better place to do it than Issaquah that is already so plugged in? You know, Washington State has the highest electric vehicle ownership of any state in the Union, per capita. And that's, most of those cars, I think, are over here on the east side. You see them all over the place. And so that was a good reason to do that here. This is the fourth year that the national nonprofit called Plug-In America has been promoting driving electric. It has been one day before, and this year, it's a whole week, so there'll be events going on all over the place, all over the country, excuse me, but right here in Issaquah is going to be the focus of the whole Seattle area because of the great things that are happening with sustainability here. And I've got to say, it's really nice to be back here in the council chambers because I've worn many hats over the years, from working at the Issaquah Press with Stacy, to working at the Issaquah Salmon Hatchery with our council member Barber and Mayor Butler. And that's how I got into doing electric vehicles. It's all about saving the habitat for the salmon, and that's one thing electric vehicles do very well. We have mostly sustainable energy here, so hydropower. Every time it rains, I think, I'm getting more energy for my car. Oh, and solar power, too. We actually have some of that here, so it actually works. And so that's why I'm so excited that we're doing this here in Issaquah now, and I would invite everybody to come and join us, learn about what the benefits of electric driving are, and how there's so many choices for us out there now, so everybody can be able to do that. Thank you so much, Mayor Butler, for recognizing this like this. I know that this is passionate for you and many of the people in this room. Great. I'm so sorry, I forgot to introduce the other people I have here, which are Roger Swerengen, who has two electric vehicles. He actually has the first all-electric Fiat 500 in Washington State, it's parked outside. And then Dave Danhart has a Tesla Roadster, that's the fun little yellow car out there. And then Kevin Bowes, and that's my husband, and we have a Cota, which is an electric car from California. So we all are dedicated to electric driving, so thank you very much.
And thank you for bringing that to Issaquah this weekend. Moving now to audience comments, as a reminder, we're having a public hearing later in the council meeting on Agenda Bill 6780, the Costco Corporate Headquarters Development Agreement, and a sunset of a portion of the Pickering Place Master Site Plan. So if you've signed up to speak on that topic, we will be announcing that topic later on in the meeting. So moving now to audience comments, guidelines for public participation. Citizen comments are an important part of the public process. We take them seriously and factor them into the decisions that we make. Anyone from the public who wishes to comment will have the opportunity to do so. When recognized, please come to the lectern, speak into the microphones, state your name, address, and relationship to the city. Please limit your comments to five minutes, and if you have written comments, please submit those to the city clerk. Again, citizen comments, both written and verbal, are an important part of the public process, and we take those seriously, and we thank members of the public who take the time to come to address the city council. With that, I would ask if anyone has signed up to speak this evening under audience comments.
I have one. Paul Boone.
Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Paul Boone, and I have a little show and tell. I reside at 655 Wilderness Peak Drive in the beautiful development known as Talis. And Talis is out on Highway 900. You might have seen how green it is. And we're still wrestling with trying to preserve our green belt. I spoke with the city council briefly, along with a couple of neighbors, back in July. And on May 1, there was a town hall meeting regarding our need for preserving the green belt, which was being threatened by clearcutting, which had already commenced, and a city representative stated that the cutting was of trees constituting 10 years of regrowth since the development and were not significant trees. So I brought, I went out yesterday, and I've got a friend here from Talis that asked me if I've got, if I came here with an axe to grind, and I said, no, I've got a saw to sharpen. But I went out and hand-sawed the tail end of the piece that was easiest to get to, and this is from 14 and 1/2 feet up from the uphill side of ground level, 16 inches diameter, narrowest dimension. This is 68 years of growth, and that's just one trunk of a multi-stemmed maple. The stump is, needless to say, pretty big. This is the start of what commenced, and the center of this picture, which was printed out by actually the people that want to do the cutting, you'll see the green, that's the green belt, all of that green, and just about everything on there, except for a few conifers, is slated to be slaughtered. It will all be gone. And, you know, there's been a lot of communication about this. There were letters to the city council, letters from David Kapler, President of Issaquah Alps Trails Club, Connie Marsh, President of Issaquah Environmental Council, and Connie stated in the newspaper recently, "I am dismayed with the City of Issaquah's decision to allow trees to be cleared and Talis to allow for views of homeowners. This is occurring on top of many years of failed planting efforts in Talis near the forest path system. The city's system of review for Talis has broken and needs your immediate attention." And then David Kapler wrote to you all in an open letter that preservation of native trees and habitat in open space parcels has been a key mitigation effort in Talis, and its importance is described in many of the regulating documents. The tree-cutting plan proposed by the HOA is in violation of many of the agreements regulating Talis, and the permit should be revoked by the city. Okay? And we still are trying very hard. We care about the trees, we care about the green space, and we really want what's best for the whole community. We want everyone's needs to be represented, and we hope that the city...I'm a little dismayed to see that your banner is gone, Issaquah, City of Trees. I hope it found a more prominent place to display, and we want to keep Talis the greenest community in this green city.
One minute.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Excuse me. Is there anyone else signed up to speak?
There's none.
Is there anyone else who has not signed up to speak who would like to speak? Yes, Ms. Marsh.
Hi, my name's Connie Marsh, and I have a store at 1175 Northwest Gilman Boulevard and also live in town. And I want to talk about the council goals, and sent y'all an email saying that I objected to the idea of public engagement being incorporated into the staff work plan. I've actually read a lot about public engagement because I always fritter about why Dave and I, Dave, are typically the only ones at the public meetings, and we get tired of speaking, and you get tired of hearing, and I often wonder why we are so alone in the wilderness when all day long people come in and yap at me, talk educated, with me about how they feel about the city and what could be better, and they have all these ideas and thoughts and feelings, and they really want to participate. And there's a big barrier there. And it is not working now because you only get a few voices. Why is it not working now? Well, I think the biggest thing is, does the city really, 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 really want to incorporate the public's thoughts and ideas into what they do? Because you have to authentically want to in order to get it done. And I guess, I think the public has to force themselves onto the government rather than being welcomed with open arms, with their ideas accepted, valued, and then honored by complete and consistent feedback to their suggestions and comments in, I guess, a respectful way. I don't know which of you up there has not been on some committee, maybe Fred, because I didn't know you before you were on something, so, that was not frustrated by the public interface with the city, and that's why many people get engaged. They go into a committee, they think they can do something good, they spend a lot of time and energy, and everybody smiles and nods, and in the end, it doesn't happen, it feels willfully ignored much of the time. And I would like that to change because I think there should be 20 people at every meeting bubbling over with ideas and thoughts. So I would suggest that we need to go back to the drawing board on that one and look at it with an entirely different paradigm shift where you can say, we authentically want to hear and we need to create a structure to incorporate that and celebrate our citizens. So there you go. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else desiring to speak this evening? Anyone else desiring to speak? Third and final call, anyone else desiring to speak? Seeing no one then, we will close audience comments and move to committee and regional reports, beginning with Councilmember...
Well...
Meligan.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no report.
Councilmember Polly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a short report. The King Conservation District Advisory Committee Executive met on September 3 to review draft implementation plans for four of the new or expanded programs that they currently operate: rural small-lot forestry, sustainable regional food system, urban agriculture, and shorelines, which include both freshwater and marine shorelines. The full advisory committee will be meeting at 4 o'clock this Wednesday at TAF Bethiday Community Center in White Center, and that's on September 17. Second, the chamber luncheon was held last week and had a keynote speaker was the new Swedish CEO, Rayburn Lewis. It was a really good discussion and presentation about the health industry and issues in our community. And the next chamber board meeting that I'll be going to as the board, as the council liaison is Thursday, September 25. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Marz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Council Land and Shore Committee met on Tuesday, September 9, at 6 o'clock here in chambers. We had a discussion on traffic concurrency. We had a further discussion on evolving facets of the proposed Costco Development Agreement. And finally, the third issue was, we looked at Agenda Bill 6875, West 45 Trail Track QC, Isquah Highlands, and we recommended unanimously for that to come back to the council at a time in the future on consent agenda. Then the following evening, the Sound Cities Association PIC met at 7:00 PM in Renton City Hall, and while a number of interesting topics were considered, there were no actions taken to be coming back for second action next month, so I invite the rest of the council to take a look at that packet. There's nothing in there that is, at the moment, actionable. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Cher.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening to members of the viewing public. I'll start with a regional report on the Eastside Transportation Partnership, which met last Friday, September 12. We had a visit from the Washington State Department of Transportation, who updated us on their strategic plan for 2014 through 2017, and a new approach to dealing with regional and statewide transportation issues, and a greater emphasis on outreach to the public and other elected officials. We also had an update from the State Department of Transportation on the west side of the State Route 520 Bridge Project, which has been coming along, and there does appear to be a fairly significant funding gap for the far west terminus of that project connecting Portage Bay to Interstate 5. Didn't particularly sound like the state had any funding on the table or availability at this point in time, but they certainly remain hopeful that Olympia will be able to come up with a mechanism for getting that project fully complete, which should be sometime in the next, maybe, four or five years, we think. We also had a discussion of our retreat, which was held in September for the partnership, and a preliminary discussion of committee formation, planning committee, Legislative Affairs Committee, and a nomination committee, which will select our new partnership leaders for 2015. At the next meeting, action will be taken on revising our procedures in terms of the meeting end time, as well as our mission and vision statement that were discussed during the retreat. Moving to a committee report, the Council Infrastructure Committee will be meeting this Thursday, September 18, at 5:30 PM in the Pickery Room of City Hall Northwest. We have a fairly intensive agenda, which I just approved this evening. We're going to have first a discussion on transportation concurrency and impact and mitigation fees, which will be a continuation of an ongoing topic that the council has addressed this year. We will take action on Agenda Bill 6877, coming back to the committee relating, I'm sorry, that one is not coming back, that one is a sanitary sewer utility 2015 rate increase. We will take action on the Isquah Highlands Shared Stormwater Agreement, which is coming back to the committee for further discussion. And then, as expected, after tonight's public hearing, we anticipate taking up the Costco Proposed Development Agreement as well. We have a discussion on a continuation of committee brainstorming on innovative traffic solutions and potential questions that the committee members will pool together for asking members of the public about what areas of transportation concern are greatest to them, and then we'll discuss some of our scheduling for the committee. One note, however, that I did not see on the agenda until I looked at this evening's consent calendar, is Agenda Bill 6886, which is slated on tonight's consent agenda to be referred to the September Infrastructure Committee meeting. If the consent calendar is approved as submitted, then that Agenda Bill will need to be added on to the Infrastructure Committee meeting, and that deals with the Level 3 acquisition of TW Telecom. And with that, that concludes my reports.
Thank you. Councilmember Barber.
Thank you, Mayor. Services and Safety met on September 4. There was three items before us that night. The first is 6885, which is the Lake Samamish State Park Memorandum of Understanding, and as that is with us this evening on the regular business, we will leave the discussion on that. The next was, we looked at 6710 Lodging Tax Authority, and there was a couple of items we were looking at on that. And the first was the confirmation of membership. So Jim Davis from the Holiday Inn, Will Parkinson from the Hilton Garden Inn, Skip Rowley, who represents the Chamber of Commerce, and Eric Menez, is the Isquah Historical Society, and myself were nominated and confirmed. We also looked at a couple of different parts in regards to the lodging tax. We looked at the RCW, the state regulations. We wanted to make sure that we were in compliance with all the funding requirements that are now established in the new RCW. We also set forward a list of criteria, so as we evaluate projects that come before us for funding opportunities, we wanted to make sure that we had a criteria by which we were judging those. So those were the items in regards to the lodging tax. And the last one with services and safety, we had just an economic update, development update, looked at the Economic Strategic Plan, we talked about the tourism plan, and also commercial power. Next thing I'd like to speak to a little bit would be the last Eastside Fire and Rescue meeting, which was held September 11. It was a fairly long meeting. We had a presentation from our Ops Committee, and they had been reviewing at our request a number of different possibilities, basically taking a look at efficiency and savings. So there, they were also tasked to look at the 2015 budget, which they did, and they brought that back to us with a comment that they really didn't find that sort of pot of gold that they had been hoping for as far as savings in regards to the 15 budget. But we did ask them to stay together and continue to review a number of items, so we sent them off with four more items to review, everything from medical insurance for the spouse, requests for proposals for the IT services that we're looking at immediately, but also into the future, healthcare, and possible other savings. So it was agreed by the board that we would encourage them to keep looking for that savings for Eastside Fire and Rescue. The budget is now going back to the Finance Committee for approval and then back to the full board. the full board. I had one other quick update. One of the items that Eastside Fire and Rescue has been looking at is possibly a training facility. And with that in mind, there was an opportunity this weekend. Chuck Duffy, who is this Washington State Fire Marshal, was hosting an event out at the North Bend Fire Training Academy, and I went and attended. It was a great opportunity to see that particular training center in work, and looking at all the proposed improvements that they are wanting to put into that facility over the next 17 years. They've got quite a lengthy list of facilities within theirs that they want to update. So it gave me a great opportunity to meet some people and talk to them about the training facilities, what their opportunities are there, and it was a very informative four hours of my time on Saturday. So we actually even had some live demonstrations in regards to, which were always amazing to watch, the firefighters going into burning buildings and coming up safe. So, thank you. That ended my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman?
I have no report.
Council President Winterstein?
Thank you. This coming Thursday is a board meeting of the Joint Recommendations Committee, and there are three action items on the agenda. We'll be deciding the Community Development Block Grant, also known as CDBG, non-housing capital awards for the 2014 Funding Round. We'll be performing a final review and adoption of the 2015 through 2019 Consolidated Plan, which is the guiding set of policies for housing funds for the CDBG, or, excuse me, for the JRC. And finally, we'll be doing a final review and adoption of the Housing and Community Development Housing Finance Program Guideline Amendments. You're all welcome to attend if you'd like. That concludes my report.
Thank you. The mayor's report, there will not be an executive session meeting this evening. I've already mentioned the food drive through the proclamation, and would encourage shoppers to pick up a list of food bank item needs and to participate in that food drive. Pick up a new look for free, go green this Halloween by trading last year's costume, donate your child's old costumes, and dress up clothes at a costume swap sponsored by the Isqwa Highlands Council and the Highlands Youth. Drop off donations inside Blakely Hall at 2550 Northeast Park Drive from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday, September 8 to 26, in exchange for a swap pass. And return between 2:00 and 4:00 PM on September 28th to pick out a new costume. The swap is free and open to all. To learn more, you can call Kristi Gerard at 425-507-1110. To help our community respond to potential hazards, the Isqwa Citizens Corps is offering training for the Community Emergency Response Team, or CERT. This training is designed to prepare you to help yourself, your family, and your neighbors in the event of a disaster. When a disaster occurs, professional emergency services personnel will not be able to help everyone immediately. That means people like you can make a difference. Now is the opportunity to join more than 500 people in our community who have already completed the program. CERT training is a great opportunity to broaden your readiness, knowledge, study new skills, and get involved. To register and learn more, visit isiquawscitizenscor.org. Last week, I joined other Eastside mayors in kicking off Leadership Eastside, a two-year leadership enrichment program. Isqwa is fortunate to have several employees in the current program, as well as active alumni. And finally, the Isqwa Salmon Days Festival is fast approaching, October 4th and 5th, 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and historic downtown Isqwa and the Isqwa Salmon Hatchery. Join us for our community celebration to mark the return of spawning salmon to our lakes, creeks, and the historic Isqwa Salmon Hatchery. Rain or shine, enjoy a grand parade, foods of the world, hundreds of arts and craft vendors, inflatables, pony rides, an extreme air show demonstration, human hamster balls, sounds like fun, live music, and of course, salmon. The festival will also highlight guests from Isqwa's sister city, Chef Chau in Morocco, showcasing art and culture. In planning for this special visit, University House Isqwa will be hosting the Sister City delegation and providing a celebration and art gala on Friday, October 3rd, between 4:00 and 7:00. Please make complimentary reservations for this event by calling 425-200-0893. And that concludes the mayor's report this evening. Moving now to our consent calendar, there's been a request to move Agenda Bill 6843, Food Packaging Amendments, and Business Off-Site Technical Assistance Funding down to Regular Business. So Item 9C under Regular Business will be Agenda Bill 6843. So with that change, I would ask if accounts payable and payroll for September 15th have been reviewed?
They have.
They have.
Yes.
And with that, what is your pleasure on the consent calendar? Council President Winterstein?
Thank you. I move that we adopt the consent calendar as amended.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the consent calendar as amended signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that carries unanimously. Moving now to our public hearing this evening, Agenda Bill 6780, Costco Corporate Headquarters Development Agreement, and Sunset of a Portion of the Pickering Place Master Site Plan. So with that, I will open the public hearing after reminding those who desire to speak that the same citizen rules or guidelines for public participation that I mentioned before would apply. When recognized, please come to the lectern, speak into the microphone, state your name, address, and relationship to the city. Please limit your comments to five minutes, and if you have written comments, please submit those to the clerk. And so, with that, I will open the public hearing at 7:37. And before I call those desiring to speak forward, I will turn it over to Keith Niven of our Economic Development Department for a brief staff presentation. Mr. Niven?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Good evening. I have a brief presentation this evening for Agenda Bill 6780, which includes two actions. One would be a development agreement for Costco, and the second would be a major amendment to the Pickering Place Master Site Plan. So, starting with Costco, currently, they own approximately 47 acres in Pickering Place, and they have approximately 700,000 square feet of buildings, and that includes their warehouse store, which is right here, as well as three office buildings, a trade building, and then they just completed a brand-new parking garage. It was developed under the Pickering Place Master Site Plan, which was approved by the City Council in 1987. Right now, what we've been negotiating with Costco has been a development agreement, which would include up to 1.5 million square feet of office, of which 250,000 square feet could be used for other non-office employment use, such as retail, hotel, manufacturing, whatever would be allowed under the existing underlying zone. There's approximately $50 million of road improvement projects, which the cost would be shared between Costco and the city. There would be payment into the density bonus program. Costco has indicated a desire to be able to build buildings above four stories, which would require participation in the density bonus program. This, as I mentioned earlier, requires a major amendment to the Pickering Place Master Site Plan. The development agreement would be for 30 years, and it includes a land plan, which would be analogous to a site development permit for those of you who are used to those. The road projects, and this really is a development agreement to negotiate for some major road infrastructure, so there's actually three projects. This one that's white, does it look white there? Yeah, it does. The white one is East Lake Samamish Parkway. So it's improvements, and this is the Fred Meyer Home Depot Shopping Center right here, so it's new improvements to that roadway. There's a new road, this yellow one, we're calling 62nd Street. It would go over Isqwa Creek and would connect Pickering Place to East Lake Samamish, and would extend public roadway up to 10th Avenue, which is basically where Costco's gas station is. And then the pink over in the left-hand side, this would be some improvements to 12th Avenue over by the Holiday Inn and Tully's. That intersection is currently a pretty significant bottleneck in the PM peak and would require some additional improvements. The land plan that's part of the development agreement, north is to the left, sorry about that, this is the Costco retail building right here. That's the gas station. This building that would be in the southwest corner would be a new car wash. You can see the existing three office buildings around the pond, the pond's on the backside here. Their land plan includes the construction of four new office buildings, and this shows the parking garage. Since there is a land plan associated with this, and the development agreement are both going through the Development Commission, the Development Commission has had two meetings so far. They have another meeting scheduled this week. The topics that we've been spending most of our time talking about have been the skybridges, the review process, traffic mitigation, removal from the master site plan, community spaces, no residential as part of this plan, and then the view corridors. The next steps, as I mentioned, Development Commission, we expect a recommendation from them after their meeting on the 17th, which is Wednesday. We still have one meeting scheduled with Land and Shore, that's the 1st of October, and that's a special meeting. And then infrastructure, as mentioned, is on the 18th. We are hoping to get an updated draft of the development agreement out by the 24th. That would include any potential recommendations coming out of the Development Commission, as well as some final negotiations between staff and Costco. And then, this hearing this evening will be continued to October 6th, where we hope to have a council decision. And that ends my presentation.
Thank you. With that, then, has anyone signed up to speak this evening at the public hearing on the Costco Development Agreement?
Yes. First, I have Rich Olin, followed by Randy Bass.
Good evening. I'm Rich Olin, Senior Vice President and General Counsel from Costco 999 Lake Drive in Isqwa. On behalf of Costco, I want to thank the City Council, the Development Commission, the administration, and the staff for their hard work and creativity that have helped to get us to this point tonight, a very significant point in the development of the development agreement. And I also want to let you know that we do not have a detailed presentation this evening. The staff did a very good job outlining various facets of the project. The committees are hard at work looking at this, and this evening really is for a public comment by the citizens, so we wanted to make sure that there's plenty of time left for the citizens to be able to comment. I'd like to address you tonight to give you a few remarks about the history of Costco in Isqwa, and also to help you understand, very simply, the importance of the development agreement and the amendment to the master site plan in terms of Costco's future. Costco and the city have enjoyed a very long and mutually beneficial relationship. It started with the beginning of the Costco Warehouse in Isqwa, which coincidentally, almost exactly to the day, opened 20 years ago in Isqwa, September 9th, to be exact, 20 years ago. And we thank the citizens of Isqwa and the greater community, and all the people, the politicians and such, to helping us make this such a successful business in Isqwa. So since that time, there's been a lot of changes, changes for Isqwa and changes for Costco. We have grown up, both of us, together. We have thrived. And I certainly don't need to tell you about the changes in Isqwa, but I would like to point out that the city's vision in developing the Central Isqwa Plan really laid the foundation for the development agreement, which is under study now, and also provided the basis under which Costco would be able to expand into Pickering Place to have our home office grow as we continue to grow. Costco, of course, has grown in the last 20 years also. We've grown in Isqwa, and we've grown outside of Isqwa. In Isqwa, since opening the warehouse, we call our stores warehouses, since opening the Isqwa Warehouse, we have built three office buildings and a multi-use building. We have expanded the Costco Warehouse three times. We've built a gas station, and we've expanded the gas station. And outside of Isqwa, we have grown the company from what was then 230 Costco warehouses in four countries, to now 663 Costco warehouses in nine countries, and we're the second-largest retailer in the United States. Isqwa is our corporate home, and we've worked very closely with staff and with the Development Commission over the years to work on the architecture for the buildings in Costco's campus in Pickering Place. And we believe that we have a beautiful campus in a wonderful community, and we're proud of that. And it's our intention to continue to stay in Isqwa and to grow our campus here. In order for us to effectively grow, we want and we need to be able to consolidate all of our office buildings in one central location, which we have identified as Pickering Place. And thanks to the CIP, we're in a position to be able to do that. So that's why the development agreement and the master site plan amendment that you're considering are so important. As Keith pointed out, the development agreement provides for the sharing of approximately $50 million of road improvements, approximately plus or minus $20 some odd million dollars for each of us. And these road improvements are necessary for Costco to be able to grow in Isqwa and to develop further in Pickering Place. And the master site plan amendment, which you're considering, is necessary so that we are able to work within the CIP guidelines, which we are not able to do now under the terms of the master site plan. So we very respectfully hope that you will support these two projects. In closing, I just want to personally publicly recognize the work of the staff on this project. We have been working together with your staff for approximately a year and a half, and these people have worked incredibly hard. We've had many late-night exchanges of documents and weekend work to make sure we meet the deadlines for the public distribution and for the Development Commission, and of course, for the City Council. These are very smart people. In particular, I want to recognize Keith Niven, and Sheldon Nguyen, and Lucy Sloman, all of whom have brought a lot of creativity, some tough negotiators they are, but they've been fair nonetheless, and so I thought you'd want to know how well they have represented you. With that, I thank you.
Thank you. Next is?
Randy Bass, followed by Samuel Rotabau. Randy Bass, followed by Samuel Rotabau.
Get this thing over here. Hey, I'm Randy Bass from, I have a business on East Lake Samamish, and the new road goes right through my property and takes about a third of it. And we're talking about the Costco development agreement, and one of the roads is 62nd Street, which he had up here, and which are going to go through my property. And many years ago, I donated 62nd Street to the city, and I knew then that it would probably have to be widened. But I never dreamed they'd run, move the whole road right through my property. And so I'm really being impacted. And you've talked about traffic mitigations here tonight, and that's one of the things you're going to be talking about. Well, I'm probably the one that's impacted the most, probably right through my gut. And in the interest of time, I'd like to just pass this out so the City Council can understand. A picture is worth a thousand words. And so if you just pass that out, maybe. On 62nd Street, I have two full accesses on 62nd Street, and the new design for the road is going to give me about half of one. And that's not going to help me too much. And of course, they say it's safety is going to be the problem, as you can see 62nd Street on your map. Well, you got a roundabout. People go around a roundabout, I guess about 10 miles an hour, come off that, they can turn left into my property on 62nd Street. I don't see where the safety problem is. You can see on your map, if they happen to be coming from Costco, they're going around about, turn left in there, they don't go through the intersection of 62nd and East Lake Samamish. And then they don't have to turn left on East Lake Samamish and try to go across two lanes of traffic into my property. Instead, they only have to go across one lane of traffic to access my property. I don't believe the city has actually studied the safety part of it in the engineering, and I'd like my engineer, and I have another engineer who, it was a friend of mine, who ran all the traffic for the city of Bellevue for the last 25 years. He was head of it. He knows what he's talking about, and I'd like my engineers to meet with the city's engineers before they get so far down the road we can't solve this problem. This ain't just my problem. This ain't my problem. This is the city's problem. The better you can get people off the road, the better. Costco's going to build all these approved projects. Well, they're billing them so they can get people in and out, and you have traffic flow. Well, that's what I'm interested in. The citizens of Issaquah being able to get in and out of my property. This ain't just for me. This is for you, all the customers that are going to come to my property. I'm going to be forced to redevelop, and because you're taking so much of my property, I can't do business no more. So I have to redevelop. That's why this is so important to me. And you're going to be buying some of my land. It's almost so important that I even donate that portion of the land, that lane is on, that left-turn lane. Except I think you really should pay me. You know, I don't really want to give up the money, but I'd almost donate it. But I already donated 62nd Street. So I just think that it's something, this is just an issue. And bless Costco, bless them. I'm not against Costco.
One minute remaining.
What?
One minute remaining.
Oh, thank you, ma'am. I'm not against Costco. So, but I am for Randy Bass and for my property and for my financial future and my family's financial future. Secondly, traffic concurrency certificates. I'm being forced to redevelop my property. I ain't got no choice. Economically, I have to do it. And I think the city should waive any traffic concurrency, what do you call them, certificates that I should have to pay for my property, because I'm the one that's forced to redevelop. And I don't care if you get the money from Costco, you know, they might have to wait a little bit to build another store, but that's a joke. But anyway, I just don't think I should have to pay for it, because you're making me redevelop my property. If it was my choice, I'd say, yeah, I should pay traffic concurrency.
Thank you.
But because I'm being forced to do it, I don't think I should have to. Thank you very much. And I'm not against Costco. Hey, I love the free enterprise system. I love the capitalist system. I love America. And when we said the pledge of allegiance, and we said, "and liberty and justice for all," I thought, you know, that means justice for Randy Bass, too.
Thank you.
For his family.
That's time.
You know? That's America. I love this country. All I'm asking is just a little bit of justice. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Samuel Rotabau, followed by Alan Wallace.
Good evening, council members. My name is Sam Rotabau, 10-900 Northeast 4th Street, Suite 2300 in Bellevue. And I, along with Bill Williamson, are, we're legal counsel for the Bass and Bass Partnership, the owners of the Issaquah Mini Storage Facility located at 6011 East Lake Samamish Parkway, which is, as you heard from Mr. Bass, a family-owned business with also a very long history in the city of Issaquah. Now, the Bass property is uniquely impacted by the anticipated roadway improvements to serve the Costco campus. In fact, as I indicated to the commission a few weeks ago, this is the property that is taking this development on the chin. Current plans anticipate a loss of significant frontage on the parkway and approximately one-third of the Bass site. A significant change in road grade is going to place the Bass property in a hole and almost certainly require full redevelopment in order to ensure commercial viability. And critically, the Bass property would lose its full access south commercial driveway. As indicated in comment letters from Mr. Williamson dated August 21st and September 2nd, our clients do object to several aspects of these road improvements and the Costco development agreement. First, we add our voice to others that have already expressed concern about the brisk manner in which this process has proceeded. We are glad to see that the public hearing on this matter will be continued to October 6th, but we note in the presentation that we just heard from Mr. Niven that a revised agreement won't even be available until September 24th. So this has been a work in progress, and not a lot of time for impacted property owners to provide their comments. Second, we believe that the transportation impacts have not been adequately mitigated for this project. Now, the development agreement that you have in your council packet expressly states that it's the intention of the parties to it to fully mitigate the impacts of their development. Attached to the development agreement as an exhibit is a master transportation funding agreement that expressly includes the widening of 62nd, which my client donated to the city, and the creation of a roundabout, and the widening of the parkway. In other words, there is a concession by the city and openly recognized that these transportation impacts are a function of the Costco development. And I mentioned before, Mr. Bass should not have to plead for what is a very simple accommodation to ensure that he retains full access on the south side of his property. As a commercial property, he depends on that. And so one of the impacts that has to be mitigated under SEPA are impacts to the built environment, and clearly the loss of a third of the site, including critical south access, is an impact that needs to be fully mitigated. And unfortunately, up until this point, as we've tried to approach city staff about this, is there's talk about resolving it in the future. And we are concerned as this process moves along that at some point, that becomes too late. One thing that I have been told is, well, this project, it's not Costco's project, therefore we can't do anything about it in the development agreement. And I repeat, that development agreement pledges that impacts under SEPA will be fully mitigated, and that impact includes an impact to my client's property.
One minute remaining.
We also have a concern about where we sit in the process. As you may be aware, our clients did appeal the SEPA determination for these roadway projects that are inextricably linked to the Costco development agreement. There has been no hearing so far before the city hearing examiner, and we do not believe that the council has jurisdiction to take a vote and take final action on this development agreement until the SEPA appeal has been resolved. Finally, we have concerns about the way that the development agreement treats the concurrency certificates that Costco will apparently have as a result of the development agreement. And Mr. Williamson's most recent letter set forth a lot of detailed questions that he's asking to be answered. And if we don't have answers to those at the moment, it tells us that this development agreement is not fully enough developed and vetted that it's ready for a final vote.
That's time.
We're asking for a forum where we can sit down and resolve this access issue before it's too late. The City Council has previously expressed support for Mr. Bass, who has been here for 40 years with his property. We ask you to reaffirm that commitment tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alan Wallace, followed by David Kapler. Thank you. Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Alan Wallace, Land Use Counsel for Johnson Underwood Properties, the developer and principal owner of the East Lake Samamish Center. We're part of a working group, including Home Depot, Fred Meyer, Kroger, and HPP Properties, have been happy that the Infrastructure Committee and the Land and Shore Committee have both provided a forum for us to speak to the development agreement. Our main concern is with the public financing of the Costco concurrency road improvements, a $48 million charge for these road improvements. And we understand there's progress in our chief legal objection that this development agreement, which is a contract, that it not prejudge the assessment of benefit under a potential local improvement district, which of course, has yet to even be formed. And the reason, again, the benefit equation is so very, very important is because LID assessments can never exceed benefit under LID law, and also LID assessments must be proportional to benefit per right-of-shares. So there's no precedent, there's no legal precedent for, under LID law, to, for contractual determination of LID benefit prior to the formation of an LID. And also, case law makes really quite clear that the requisites for LID law have to be very closely adhered to by a city council. So as some of the prior speakers have mentioned, we've got a little bit of a moving target here. We don't have the next draft out. I'm understanding there's going to be progress on this issue in the next draft. We look forward to the continuing forums of the committee meetings and the next public hearing. Hopefully, we'll have this question answered when we see the next draft. Thank you.
Thank you.
Last on my list, David Kapler.
Hello, David Kapler, 255 Southeast Andrews Street. A little concerned that we don't have a final development agreement tonight, so I'm glad we're going to be continuing this to October 6th, and I hope there'll be a lot more final or documents available, and there will be, of course, some other additional meetings. Goal L, 1.2 from the Central Issaquah Plan, creating a diversity of high-quality places to live, work, shop, and recreate. Well, we're going to have a place to work here. We're not going to have a place to live. Let's at least try and figure out something that'll improve the recreational aspect of it, and there'll be some shopping additional opportunity. Trails, the green necklace, you know, the whole, one of the big selling points of this Central Issaquah Plan, which this development agreement is trying to latch on to and isn't a perfect match by any means, but at least gets things such as important as a green necklace incorporated in that. The trail needs to be connected to Lake Samamish State Park. Trail underneath Northwest Samamish Road goes there and then could easily go onto city property at that point around the Vet Hospital instead of in front of it, in that intersection, and go through the woods on city property and connect with the state park and get some signs and that kind of thing. That's also the area where the Central Issaquah Plan shows a bridge going over the creek for pedestrian bike usage over towards the, where the Vulcan property is, which we're not, I'm not asking for that bridge at this point, but let's at least get the trail that goes past that point where a bridge should be and connect to the state park in a way that does not require as many road crossings and a much nicer experience than going in front of the Vet Hospital and then going through the parking lot at the unsigned parking lot or un-trailed, no trail signs there, through the parking lot, finding the trail that goes to the beach area. I guess that's frustration. What about the eight-foot-wide trail, the Pickering Trail we have now? I can see potentially a lot more traffic on that trail from bikes, and it's pretty minimal width of eight feet in that corridor, and having to widen that up and maybe doing something better to separate bikes from pedestrians would be a big safety improvement and enhance that. There's been a lot of talk at Development Commission and all about plazas and public plazas, but where, the only way the public is going to get to those plazas practically is to walk, right? There's not, there's not public parking to enjoy the plazas being provided on the streets. All the streets, the new streets have no parking, and I don't imagine, and I'm sure over time, more and more of the parking available on the Costco site will be limited to Costco employees and not just the general public that wants to go and enjoy the plazas. So trying to get more recreation built into this, getting it a place where people want to be, walk through, you travel through it, get to the state park, get from the state park to the rest of the city, is something that needs much improvement in this agreement. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who has not signed up? Who desires to speak?
Mr. Mayor and council members, my name is Christopher Brown. For the record, the address is 9688 Ranier Avenue, South Seattle, Washington. I am the traffic engineer, one of them, with, I worked with Randy Bass, gosh, in 1993, and Wayne Tanaka and I go back, must be 30 years, ever since we did the traffic study for the Meadows. I want to attack this project in a certain manner of ways. It has been demonstrated at the last Development Commission meeting that a driveway with full turning movements on the south property line can well serve the Bass site subject to the year 2030 by merely extending the eastbound left-turn lane from the East Lake Samamish Parkway back to the traffic circle that is being proposed and converting the rear portion into a two-way left-turn lane. The two-way left-turn lane would provide adequate levels of service and, in my judgment, adequate safety. Of course, the final goal would have to be the grading of the roadway, which means filling in the property of the Bass property to bring the driveways up to grade. The proposed turning movements can be partly offset by this right-of-way, occasioned by the traffic roundabout. However, by the year 2030, East Lake Samamish Parkway, southeast 2nd Street, will be LOSE, which implies marginal operations. Indeed, queuing may interfere with a traffic roundabout on 221st Place Southeast. If this is the case, the next question must be- If this is the case, the next question must be, why was a proposed traffic circle or a roundabout proposed in the first place? The answer to the question, you might want to consider a few facts. For example, you know that traffic roundabouts generally lie and function adequately with equal traffic flows on all legs. Otherwise, you may end up with a congestion problem now experienced at the casino, a Pencino Call me. But the westbound flow approaching this roundabout is 950 vehicles per hour. The southbound traffic flow is 335. This is a split of about three to one. It is a disparity. It is certainly not equal flows. Further, in accordance with National Cooperative Research Project Publication 364, they are not useful in giving priority flows to major streets like 67, 62nd. So again, the question should be asked, why is there a proposed traffic roundabout in the first place? With these in mind, I asked the Bass property attorney, Mr. Williamson, if he had seen a copy of what is called a value engineering study. I wanted him to get on to this program since the value engineering study is knownly a part of the Wash Dot Design Guidelines, Chapter 310, but is published as Title 23, United States Code, Subsection 2. Also equally germane to the matter at hand, it is mandated by Office of Management and Budget Circulator 2A3 dated May 21, 1993, and that is the over-the-signature signature of Leon Panetta, by the way. The federal government has finally realized that we ought to get value for money. Without a doubt, a value engine study will assist--
Forty-five seconds remaining.
--will assist the city council to arrive at a fine financial consideration. Obviously, the use of a traffic signal and a red section, intersection with that signal may offer a way out. Next, traffic guidelines require a certain amount of financial juggling. The life of surface pavements and accoutrements is 14 years. The life of a structure, this is a bike lane, is 50 years, a structure. The life of right-of-way is taken at 100 years, and the value of a motorist's travel time is taken at zero--
That's time, sir.
--because they're over. I ask you to consider, just the Bass property may be taking the value over 100 years.
That's time.
To conclude, the value of the study will allow you to choose the most effective way to evaluate the cost and benefits of this corridor design that will have long-term commitments from the city.
Thank you.
You're a 50%. And in closing, this is important financial consideration, most likely of substantial significance, since I'm sure you'll want to take the opportunity to dress the SEPA on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Do you have a copy of your remarks for the clerk?
Yes, I do, and I have a copy of the Code of Federal Regulations.
And so while we're getting copies of these documents, is there anyone else in the audience desiring to speak this evening? Anyone else desiring?
Okay, yet again, Connie Marsh, 1175 Northwest Gilman Boulevard, also live in Issaquah. So you guys have gotten lots of detail and just lots of stuff from me. So you can see, I'm frustrated with the idea that this office park follows the Central Issaquah Plan that we struggled to create. And it's disappointing to think that by accepting this development agreement, we may be allowing further erosion of the Central Issaquah Plan, because everybody will look and say, they got it, and then usually we say, okay. So do we really want the Central Issaquah Plan? Again, I don't know if we authentically want the Central Issaquah Plan, because I remember long ago, they said, you know what, we're going to be able to enforce those visions. And we don't seem to even be trying to. And maybe we don't want it, in which case, we need to change our minds. So if we're trying to accomplish the CIP, because we spent so much money on it in the first place, one major thing that is missing in this is a pedestrian grid that's open to the public. I went out there today. I tried to get you all a video of what I saw, maybe tomorrow. And walked the trails, and there are no links really right now. I wandered around a lot. I had no idea where I was going. I wanted to go bounding through parking lots. There were warning signs saying, danger, don't use this cut-through, all kinds of things to keep you in an elongated pathway. So in the Central Issaquah Plan, we're supposed to have a 250-foot grid system. You'll see in their land plan, you don't have this. They say 300 feet, and then half of those are going through private buildings. And you'll notice that those pathways through private buildings are the areas that would actually get you to the creek trail. And so what you're doing is you're basically making superblocks for the pedestrians that might want to use this trail. I will say, it was really nice out there today. It was sunny, there were tons of people, lots of Costco badges using the public spaces over there, and a lot of people who obviously were not Costco people enjoying the public spaces, too. Now Costco has been pretty clear that they expect this to be a secure office campus and are not inclined to encourage the public to go wandering through their campus. In the Central Issaquah Plan, that is the antithesis of what we want. We want the public to enjoy these spaces. One thing that I've been doing is I've been trying to map the pedestrian pathways for this town so that people could know where they could walk. And I have found up in the Issaquah Highlands, for example, and varying other places, that these sort of private-public areas, they say you can't put that on a map because it's private property, yet we are calling it one of our city amenities. And if you can't put it on a map so people that can know that it's there, I don't think that that is a public amenity. And I fear that this is going to fall into that category of, yeah, well, you could go there, but we aren't going to be able to put it on any map so you could ever find it. And that is disappointing because that is not the intent of the Central Issaquah Plan. The connection with the state park is just missing. Brilliant today, as I was walking down, trail closed, trail closed, on either side of the trail going underneath the Stinky Bridge, under 56th. And I was amazed by how perfect that was for me, because the staff report said, this is our linkage to the state park. We don't need to do any more. It's done. Well, clearly, the trail is closed, so it is not even close to being done. So we need to really emphasize our connections in this area. I walked down--
One minute remaining.
Yep. I walked down 56th, and I turned around, and there was this mass of concrete for the road system, where you would be state park, and then you look across, and there's Costco. And it took me, I don't know, three and a half minutes to get across the street, waiting forever at the lights. That is not what we want for this town, and this is where we are going again. Now, one thing, the process has been fast and odd. I'm not going to go further. Pickering Master Site Plan, I wish we had two five-minute sections, because I feel like I'm being inappropriately constrained by having two major topics and only being able to use five minutes for both. So to remove Costco from the Master Site Plan maybe is not a problem, but the changes in the CCNRs need criteria for authorization by the city. Right now, it just says that the city will say it's okay. It doesn't give standards or reasons by which it would say that the changes in the CCNRs would be approved.
Thank you.
And without that, I can't, I can't say that I would affirm or agree with those changes. So I would ask for that language to be clarified in this development agreement. Doing the best I can. I should have 10 minutes. Okay, that's it. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience desiring to speak? Anyone else desiring to speak? Third and final call. Anyone else in the audience desiring to speak? Seeing no one, the public, there's no one else desiring to speak? Is, the recommendation in the agenda bill is to continue the public hearing to the city council regular meeting of October the 6th. Is there a motion?
So my question, procedural question, we require a motion to continue the public meeting? Okay. Public hearing, thank you. Okay. Well, I would so move that we continue the public hearing on the Costco DA until October 6th.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Any discussion or comments at this time? Councilmember Winterstein.
It's a complex topic, and I am still studying it closely and will be for the remainder of the time. It'll be in front of us. But part of that is listening to the comments that were offered tonight. So I want to thank Mr. Olin, Mr. Bass, Mr. Rondabaugh, Mr. Wallace, Mr. Kapler, Mr. Brown, and Ms. Marsh for their comments, very helpful to the process. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of continuing this public hearing to the city council regular meeting of October 6, 2014, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries unanimously. Moving now to regular business, Agenda Bill 6885, Lake Sammamish State Park Memorandum of Understanding with Washington State Parks and Recreation Committee. This is coming back from Land and, excuse me--
Services and Safety.
--from Services and Safety. Councilmember Barber.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, this is coming back from Services and Safety. And this is a request, as we have, we know, from state parks to annex into Issaquah. If the, just a reminder for everyone, because I've had a couple of people comment and talked with me in regards to this, that this is, if they annex into us, they still own the property, they still manage the property and operate it. The City of Issaquah will have no involvement in those portions of what will be happening at the state park. There is some confusion from a number of people I've spoke to who believe that the City of Issaquah will be taking over the park with lots of great ideas as to what we want to do with it. So this memorandum of understanding is going to clarify a couple of items: law enforcement functions, lifeguard services, dispatch services, development services related to construction improvements, planned action environment impact statement for future development, development and insurance of private sector development proposals. The committee recognizes that the state parks has a couple of plans out there that they are, have had on their books, and we do recognize that these plans are appropriate for development, and wanted them to be referenced in the MOU. And those two plans are, one of them is called the Camp Plan, Lake Sammamish State Park 2014, and the Parks Redevelopment Camp Plan from 2007. There's another part in regards to this, not only the acceptance of that memorandum of understanding, but there is a $10,000 shortage. So there is a request for $10,000 to the city's anticipated additional shoreline patrol costs. So that would increase the current budget from 2014 of $18,000 to $28,000. As committee reviewed this, there was only a couple of changes we had, and the first one was under Item 2, or recommended changes. Simple change of the word "will" to "may" as we talk about providing lifeguard services. And the next one was in the development and issuance of private sector development proposals at the state park, the inclusion of the words, and in the promotion of the state parks as a tourism attraction. So I would like this evening to authorize the mayor to enter into and execute a memorandum of understanding regarding Lake Sammamish State Park.
Second. It is moved and seconded. Questions or discussion?
Question.
Council President Winterstein.
So when we reviewed this at Services and Safety, there were edits to the MOU, that copy, that notes attached to them indicated that those changes had not yet been reviewed and approved by the state park. And I'm wondering if that status has been updated. Are we looking at final language that has been reviewed and adopted by, accepted as well for the representative of the state park? Does anybody know?
I can speak to that.
Thank you.
City Clerk Tina Eggers here. I know that there was an addition of a whereas, and that was, to my understanding, accepted. And there was clarification regarding, what was it, police services? And that was accepted.
Thank you.
Other questions or discussion? Councilmember Scher.
Thank you. I had a question in terms of the funding. It talks about adding $10,000, and if I read this or if I understood the comments correctly, that is the 2014 budget? So, because I heard 2014, and the way that it's written says the current budget for 2014 is $18,000. If the annexation goes through, our patrol costs will total 28. Therefore, if you look at the cover sheet of the bill, it says expenditure required 28 amount budget 18. So I'm a little unclear why it would be necessary to do in fiscal year 2014, when it seems like any annexation wouldn't go through until probably the end of this year. It seems more like a 2015 budgetary item.
And I would agree with that. It's my assumption that that is a 2015 budget item or would kick in once the annexation is complete. We typically negotiate with King County for shoreline patrol on an annual basis, is my understanding.
All right. I appreciate the clarification. With that explanation, I'll support this agenda bill, even though I wasn't supportive of the zoning aspect at our last meeting. I think it's funny, it mentions the '07 plan, which was one of the items I cited as the basis for not liking the zoning, but this particular MOU doesn't really talk about the zoning, per se. It allows us to move forward simply with the annexation and providing services. So I'll be supporting this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Councilmember Polly.
Just another question for Services and Safety. In terms of what the annexation generates in terms of revenue and expenses, is that something you guys discussed in committee? Property taxes collected versus cost of patrolling, cost of police services?
In this particular bill dealing with the MOU, no. It was, we only address the MOU. And so in general, we haven't really seen expenses versus revenues for the annexation in general.
Okay. Thanks.
Other questions or comments? Councilmember Winterstein.
I just wanted to point out one of the terms here on this MOU that I'm particularly interested in seeing. I just want to highlight my interest in that, and that actually has to do with lifeguards. Couple months back, when with the help of the state parks and interested citizens, just at the beginning of the formation of the Friends of Lake Sammamish State Park Group, they held a meeting, and the citizens who attended were asked to identify, you know, certain features or changes or elements of the park or activities or programs that they're keenly interested in. And I raised that when I was at that meeting, lifeguarding as being something I was very interested in. And at the time, it received a pretty cool reception. It didn't get a lot of, a lot of dots up on the board next to it when people did their voting. But I don't know what's transpired since then, but I think the idea that in collaboration with the state park, if our city can help create a truly-- that in collaboration with the state park, if our city can help create a truly, a true destination location for both our city and regional families with young kids, and particularly, if you travel the lake in summertime, a lot of the private locations along the lake are just thriving with activity with kids on docks and swimming around. And then when you come by the park, there's a lot less activity. And, and so I just, I'm letting those negotiating the MOU, or will follow up with that, know a strong support I have for the city participating in a lifeguard program.
Noted. Other questions or comments? Are you ready to act on Agenda Bill 6885, that would authorize the mayor to enter into and execute the memorandum of understanding regarding Lake Simami State Park? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that carries unanimously. Moving now to Agenda Bill 6864, update of 2013-14 City Council Goals. This is coming back from the Services and Safety Committee, Councilmember Barber.
Thank you, Mayor. This did go through committee, but I'm going to hand this off to Autumn Monahan to do the presentation in regards to this.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Autumn Monahan. I'm the city's communications manager. I'm here to do a short recap on our process for updating the council goals for 2013 and 14. And we've come a long way with council goals, I think, in the past year, starting with the 2015 process, where we've listed out kind of a timeline and action steps for each goal that makes it clear for the public, for the council, and for the administration. So council asked us to do the same for the 2013 and 14 goals, and administration has categorized them by either continuing the goal, completing the goal, or removing it from the list. We met with Services and Safety on August 7, and they had a few tweaks to our list. The first was moving the "Encourage a Greater Citizen Voice" to the completed list, with the understanding that we're consistently looking for ways to engage with our community via our communications team. We'll also keep tracking this as a priority for council and doing updates often with you guys and kind of what we're up to as far as new and innovative tools. We'll move the "Healthy Community Strategy" to the continue list, and a new goal template is now included as Exhibit B. And the third change was moving "Rainier Trail" to the continue list. And council leadership met on September 10 and recommended a new action plan and timeline for this goal that's included as Exhibit C. So with that, I'm here to answer any questions.
So thank you for that presentation. Before we get to questions or discussion, do we, would you like to move the item for questions and discussion?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I would like to move to approve the 2013-2014 city goals as presented.
Second. It's moved and seconded. Questions or discussion? Councilmember Mars.
I have a question regarding "Plan for Neighborhood Parks," because I see, there's a column for "Is this goal resourced?" And I see there are several goals for which it says "Plan yes, implementation no," which I would understand if there was a planning and implementation aspect to the goal. But "Plan for Neighborhood Parks" is "Parks to host public input meeting on Hillside Park in the third quarter of 2014." And then number two is "Update the Park's Comprehensive Plan in 2015." By "Plan yes, implementation no," what does that mean in that situation?
It means that the Park's Comprehensive Plan is definitely resourced, and that will be done. It means the implementation for knowing what will happen with Hillside Park or other parks, as far as actual implementation of any improvements to the parks, is unknown.
Okay. But the goal doesn't have any actual changes to the park? That's what I was saying.
Yeah.
If the goal had said, "And, you know, make it a better park," or whatever, then I would, okay.
Yeah. Good point.
Okay, but the, but the two items that are there are both funded?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Councilmember Milligan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Autumn, for your work. You've been juggling a lot with this and so many different voices and a real complicated and a transitional time for our goals. And this was my first year in participating in the goal setting. It was very exciting to be in a sophisticated program. But then we have inherited goals from the past that didn't have the benefit of the tools that we use this year. And I wanted to bring attention to the public interaction, or what was called the "Encourage a Greater Citizen Voice." And gosh, no, it never can be completed. We will always do that. And I think that when this sort of thing comes up again as a goal for City Council, it will be a goal that will say, "Hey, we want to reach this level," or "We will accomplish this thing." Now, as far as the way that this goal was documented at the time, was, was too vague to, to do that. And so what we can do now is say that there was an improvement. And then next time we have a council goal setting, this is one of my favorite topics, and it'll, it'll be fun to work on to bring in something that might be measurable, that the communication officer of the council can achieve and be proud of, and then just continue to move the bar up, not to call it completed because we're done, but we're just moving on to the next step of increasing public participation. So thank you, Autumn.
Councilmember Scher.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, on the, the remove-from list, there were a couple I wanted to comment on. One sort of dovetails with Nina's comments about engagement and public participation, and that's on the Neighborhood Engagement Plan. And that also is apparently being incorporated into the work plan. And, you know, I just think that there's more that can be done. And that's another one of those goals that I don't think you can really ever complete. I mean, we heard in public comment tonight from a gentleman in the Tallis neighborhood about a lot of concerns that residents in Tallis have about tree cutting issues that are going on. And, you know, I think as a city, we should try to work closely with the interests in Tallis, both the ones who support the proposal and the ones who are against the proposal, to establish a position for the city and find out what the city can do or can't do to make sure that the concerns that we hear from residents are addressed. And that's just one neighborhood in the city. I mean, we have so many others, each with their own specific neighborhood-level concerns. So, again, just like Nina's comments, you know, this one's not on the completed, this one's just remove. I don't know, maybe, maybe that's worse than saying it's completed. Maybe it means we didn't complete it, we just don't want to do it. But I think we are going to do it. It's in the work plan, and I think we're going to continue those sort of efforts. The other one I wanted to point out is the city campus. And I know there was discussion around that the last time these goals came back before us, before they got referred to committee. And I, I don't know what happened at the committee-level discussion on that, but I'm still disappointed if it doesn't get included on this list of goals. You know, this, and, and just to be upfront, this was not my goal at all. In fact, I, I'm not even sure I voted for this goal. I probably ran out of dots or something at the time. But, you know, just seeing it on the list and seeing that it was a 2014 goal, and knowing that this is an important, long-term consideration for the city. I mean, we've had, you know, Bob Harrison has told us that this is an important goal because it would help consolidate city staff and resources and ultimately reduce costs, which will improve efficiencies within our city government. And, you know, it says the goal is unfunded, and that's apparently the reason given for removing it from the list. I just tend to believe that when the council says this is a goal that we want to see done, maybe it doesn't get done in 2014, maybe it doesn't get done in 15 or even 16, but it's a goal. And we have a lot of others on this list that aren't going to get done by 2014, 15, or maybe even 16, and they're not being removed from the list. My feeling is if we say something's a goal, we should try to find a way to make it get funded at some point in time. And maybe we can't do it in this next fiscal year, but it doesn't mean we just strike it from the list because we say there's not funding available. It's a laudable goal. I don't think anything's changed since these goals were adopted. It's 2014. We're, we're not talking about six or seven years ago, where suddenly we realized we want to move in a new direction. We're talking 12 months ago, less than 12 months ago, that this goal was adopted. And, and I'm not sure if this was discussed in committee, or what happened here, or if it just didn't get attention. But it, it seems to me that that one in particular should remain on the continue list. If, if it doesn't, I'll support the bill, and I'll support the goals, and I'll trust that our committee scrutinized it and analyzed it appropriately, even without that on there. But I just wanted to call attention to it because it, it was a goal, and I'm just a little surprised that it's being stricken.
Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Winterstein.
Yeah, a couple of comments, but take, but first, I want to respond to Councilmember Scher. When this agenda bill first came to the council, we were, the original proposal was to take action right during regular business, and we altered course and said, "Let's send it to committee." And the question of, I believe we discussed the, I certainly recall you making comments about the campus goal as well. And my recollection, and one reason I didn't pursue it, so in committee, I did not pursue changing this, then as it's proposed here, and as you see it here, as it was originally on the agenda bill, and it's as it came to committee, and it's, and it looks the same way coming out of committee. My own personal take on that is because this was a line item in the proposed budget for this year, and after council deliberations, we removed it. So we did not fund the, this particular goal. My thinking simply was, that's a very material action by the council, and effectively is saying, you know, "Not this goal, not now." And so that's, that's why I didn't pursue what you're asking. Okay, not funded now, but it's, it's not something we're going to do now, but let's just hold on to it. I thought when we took council action and didn't fund it, then we were essentially voting on the goal to table it until a future time when maybe somebody else wants to propose it again. But that's my interpretation of the action. So, just so you know what I was thinking. But also, just in general, I think that we did this, the goal-setting this year in, and really worked to define goals that people understood. The outcomes were measurable, the outcomes were understood very well. And we went back and retrofitted the most recent, the 2013, 2014 goals with this form. I think this is a very good attempt. I think we're kind of missing the original formation of these goals that we're considering right now, but, and, and so, but this is a very good attempt to kind of recreate the original intent, and, and in some cases, create milestones and outcomes and measure deliverables that weren't there in the original proposal of the goal. So I, I suspect going forward, you know, in this new framework, as already mentioned, you know, we won't really have to do this again. At least that is my hope. But I also think it's important to recall where, where goals fit within the continuum. You know, as council members, there's many different ways that we can affect change here within the city. Obviously, goals is a critical one. We tend to be very, we try to think strategic and bigger picture, and we get, and these are items that can dramatically affect staff's work plan for the upcoming year, so they need to plan for them. And, and goals is one way to do that. But also, in a moment, we're going to be talking about an agenda bill which had council sponsorship. It actually didn't come from staff. And I think this idea of sponsoring an agenda bill for an issue that you're passionate about is yet another way. It's not the goal process, but it's still a way that we, as counselors, have to affect change. And of course, you know, every one of you participates in leadership meetings, and there's ways that, just through conversations and, and being aware and, and talking to staff and, and the administration about issues, of course, are other ways that we can affect, you know, even, you know, usually smaller scale, but still important goals. And then everyone is either on, well, everyone's on a committee, and those that are committee chair positions, of course, you can always invite staff and other subject matter experts, you know, for reports, for input, and you can influence those that are, you know, conducting their work plans in that way as well. It's less, it's not a, usually an agenda bill associated with those, but those are, I think, just some really powerful ways that we can affect change for the benefit of the citizens. And, and I think, I'd like to keep the whole goal-setting process kind of in, in that framework, keep that in mind. In this particular bill, one of the things we're considering is this designation of some as complete. And some of them had real clear milestones and deliverables, and they're complete, you know. Kohani, done, check. Okay, very easy to determine. I think many are less clear, and that's what we're trying to, you know, overcome. And, and so, complete, the way I want to interpret this is that it's either done-done, like a Kohani-type issue, or our intent to provide updates on the goal at a regular goal update presentation, this one's off the agenda. And so, as you know, you know, we've had a practice over the years of just getting, okay, updates on this city, on this year's goals. So by saying complete, we're taking that off the agenda. That doesn't mean that the work behind it, whether it be just a single department or a cross-departmental program, that it's, that it's no longer being worked on. It doesn't mean that it's not as definitive. It can be. And, and so, and so I think that's, that's how the, the intent of this complete status is. It's, you know, for those that are ongoing work in process. And also want to comment, too, about the neighborhood one. That was one that I was dearly involved with as well. And at committee, I accepted that perhaps a, if I want to push that again, that a better formed with a clear, more clear objectives and action steps, and, and would be required, and it can be proposed again, you know, at another, at another goal-setting retreat, you know, if, if someone desires. But I, I was interested in bringing that one back, but I realized that it was too nebulous and did need more clarification. So rather than doing it in this process, we'll do it, may take that up in a, in a future process. So, anyway, I appreciate the form that we have them in now. I think as counselors, we have a much clearer idea of what they are and what, what, at least what progress will look like. And I believe the administration, the staff, when they tell us, that their understanding is more clear on these as well. So, again, there's still going to be some work going forward, even on those that are marked completed, and I think that's important to understand, but at least we know what we're trying to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? I would make a general comment, and it's the one that we heard, some comments on during audience comments, and you may have seen an email from one of our citizens. And it has to do with "Encourage a Greater Citizen Voice." While we're moving that to the completed list, we've integrated that into our work plan. And one citizen who I talked to this weekend provided some metrics. What you may not be aware of, that the senior leadership team is in the process right now of updating metrics and selecting new metrics. And so those potential metrics that were provided under the category of "Encourage a Greater Citizen Voice," we'll be, we're, we're going to be looking at that, and if appropriate, include those as a means of trying to measure just how well we are doing. In addition, in November, there will be a citizen survey, statistically valid, with using a survey that hundreds of other citizens, cities in the United States take. And then we will have some other specific measures and information, which I believe will be useful to the council and to the administration as we try to figure out how to improve areas that might need improvement. So all of those things are sort of a continuation or a part of this also. But I appreciate Councilmember Winterstein's comments, because now I believe with the approval of this agenda bill, I and the staff have a clear expectation of what the council expects us to do and, and to hold us accountable for. And so this has been a very worthwhile exercise to reconsider the 2013-14 goals and meld them into the same format that we used in your very successful council goal-setting retreat this year. So thank you for indulging me in the opportunity to comment. I normally don't do that as you are considering action, but I just wanted to share those thoughts with you this evening. So are there any other questions or comments before you take action on this agenda bill? Seeing none, then all those in favor of approving Agenda Bill 6864, to approve the 2013-14 city goals as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that carries unanimously. Moving now to Item 9C, Agenda Bill 6843, Food Packaging Amendments and Business On-Site Technical Assistance Funding. This was a request of Council President Winterstein to move down to regular business. I would allow each, or ask that, you comment on that agenda bill, please, as I find it in my pack. You comment on that agenda bill, please, as I find it in my packet.
All right. All right. Thank you. And I see David Fujimoto at the mic, at the ready. And the reason I asked to bring this down was it's really very... It's very... It's not complex. That the... Well, first of all, I've never seen a request for approval of spending $750 before, so I thought we'd have to have comment on that. But the other part of this bill, I... The clarifications to the code, I think, are well-intended and well-done. I hope businesses can understand what "on-premise" now means and visible, you know, actually making things very conspicuous and visible and well-marked. I hope that's very, very clear. The other... But the element of this bill that I just wanted to say publicly before we approved it right now is a request to put into the 2015 budget plan $15,000 for a consultant for outreach to the business community for education and coaching, so to speak. And I just wanted to make just perfectly clear. I mean, so this... So, all we're doing is this bill would advise the administration to put a line item in the budget of that amount, but we're still going to go through budget deliberations. And so, one of the questions I did have, just what to expect out of this for that amount. Where will we expect to see that money funded out? Where would that be funded from? Which fund?
David Fujimoto, Sustainability Director. I imagine that the funding for that would come out of the Sustainability Fund, the 120 Fund, which is where the majority of the programs for sustainability come out of.
Okay. So, okay. It's a simple question. I just wanted to get that clarification. But again, I just wanted to be sure that... Just make a public comment that by... This is not a preapproval of any spending of a 2015. We're still going to deliberate the budget item that we're going to get. And then finally, I'm just going to repeat something I said earlier, is that, you know, it was... I appreciate that with the support of this mayor and staff, I think we've got a clear... This bill represents a more clear process available to us all for council members to get a bill drafted and bringing it before this council for consideration. Councilmember Scher, you know, first brought it up, and then... I don't know, you spoke to another council member. He's limited on how many council members he could speak to about it ahead of time. But there was another council member who indicated their support for having a bill drafted. He raised that, gave that information to me as council president. I relayed it and had a conversation at leadership with the mayor and said, you know, "Please, you know, we've got a council member and a second sponsor for an issue, you know, will you please work with your staff and work with the council member, sponsoring council member, to draft this bill?" And they accepted that, and now we're here we are today. And so, if that mechanism, you know, wasn't clear to you before, I think it should be really clear. Like we just said, you know, goal-setting is one way, but there are other ways through legislative action and having, you know, council-sponsored bills themselves come before us. I just wanted to make sure that everybody's aware of that. That's all. Thank you.
Councilmember Scher.
Thank you. I'll have some comments since this got pulled down. But in the meantime, before we get to that, I'd like to make a motion so we can have further discussion on the bill. I would move to adopt ordinance number... All right. 2719, amending Chapter 8.07 Food Packaging of the Iskua Municipal Code, Section 8.07.0.010 Definitions, and Section 8.07.040, Requirement to Enroll in a Commercial Food Waste Recycling Service or Keep Containers for Recyclable or Compostable Food Packaging on Premises for Consumer Use, and authorize $750 in 2014 for a recognition campaign.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Questions or discussion? Councilmember Scher.
Thank you very much, Mayor. So, since we have the opportunity, I just first wanted to address why there's a bill for only $750. I would have liked this bill to have been $15,000 right now, but the committee discussed this at length over the course of several months, and ultimately, we unanimously came to a consensus that we were not comfortable funding the full amount in 2014 and doing a mid-year budget adjustment. So, the compromise, as the committee as a whole saw it, was to do a recognition campaign and to do some form of promotion for the businesses that are in full compliance with the ordinance. So, the promotional aspect will come now, the shaming will come later, is the way I like to think of it. But we're going to promote those businesses who have done the right thing. And to do that, there's a small cost, which we are going to share with Cedar Grove, who is going to match $750 to help fund the campaign. So, we were able to leverage working with Cedar Grove to reduce that cost to the city. And this bill, as was pointed out, does not specifically authorize $15,000 in funding in 2015. Nothing in my motion mentioned the 2015 budget. It's simply going to be included out of the staff request for budgeting because of the importance of doing this outreach in 2015. Just to give some background on how this came about, this was initially something that had been considered for potential 2014 funding. I didn't bring the issue up at our last budget discussions because we had a lot of other items on the agenda and a lot of funding things to deal with, especially balancing our general funds. So, you know, I agreed to defer this not to the budget discussions, but to have it come back through the Infrastructure Committee. Actually, in September of 2013, about a year ago, we talked about it in committee, and I had asked at that time for a bill to come back, and that took some time. And so, it finally came back before the committee in March of this year. And we were informed by David and Micah Bonikowski that there's been a significant impact. We've saved over 3,700 tons of waste in just the year 2013 alone. There was a need, however, for outreach, and they elaborated on that in July, telling us that 55 businesses in the city are in compliance with our ordinance, which has been on the books since 2010, but 77, less than 50%, are doing something less than full compliance. And that was either missing food waste collection service or the right type of collection. So, this particular decision to fund in 2015, which, again, will be the subject of budget discussions, came about because of the importance of trying to bring more businesses into compliance, level the playing field, make sure that everyone is doing what we asked them to do some four years ago. The other aspect of this bill is the housekeeping amendments. And just so that everybody understands what these amendments are, they're very small, but they're significant. There were a couple loopholes in this ordinance that were identified over the course of the last couple of years. One is that the type of containers on-site that a business has, it will now require the containers to be for recycling, composting, or both based on the type of packaging the business utilizes. So, if you don't have any compostable materials at your business, there's no point in having a green compost container on-site. Same goes vice versa if you only have compostables, for instance. If you have both, then you've got to have both. It requires them to be conveniently and conspicuously located and clearly marked. The definition of clearly marked is now clear in terms of what that means. And we also update the definition of premises. And this actually, very timely, came out of looking at Costco in particular, because the way Costco set up with its food court, the idea was not to require Costco to literally have a recycling and compost container everywhere they're handing out a sample. It just... It seemed like a little much to do. So, by defining premises as an area that's limited to where food is provided for consumption that's separate and distinct from other parts of the business where food is not available for purchase, such as handing out samples, then it would define premises more narrowly and allow a business to more appropriately cite their containers. And, again, the conspicuous and clear marking is very, very important so that people know what to put in which type of bin. Contaminating the waste stream is really a very significant part of this law to avoid contaminating the waste stream, because it's one thing to say, "You've got to have the right packaging, you've got to have the containers." But if we don't educate the public and we don't educate business owners about how to make sure it gets into the right waste stream, then this ordinance is of no effect, and it really does us no good in terms of diverting all that waste that we've succeeded and really taken a leadership role on, not just on the East Side, but really in this entire state over the last four years. So, you know, I've said it before, I'll say it again, this is probably the law that I am the most proud of in being on the council in my six and a half years. I am very pleased to see these amendments going forward. I sincerely hope that we will do the funding next year, and I will be fighting very hard at budget time to make sure we do that. And I appreciate staff including those funds in their budget request. I'd be happy to answer any questions, if my colleagues have any, about this particular bill, but I will wholeheartedly support the bill this evening. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Pauli.
I just have a comment. I wanted to thank Councilmember Winterstein for bringing it down so we all got to hear Councilmember Scher's passionate, passionate speech about how proud he is of this particular legislation and being very new to Infrastructure Committee. I think it's important, too, but it is fun to hear Josh talk about it.
We won't vote on whether everyone was happy to hear you talk about it this evening, Josh, but are there any other questions or comments on the motion? Seeing none, then all those in favor of adopting Ordinance Number 2014-2719, amending Chapter 8.07 Food Packaging of the Iskua Municipal Code, Section 8.07.010 Definitions, and Section 8.07.040, Requirement to Enroll in a Commercial Food Waste Recycling Service or Keep Containers for Recyclable or Compostable Food Packaging on Premises for Consumer Use, and Authorize $750 in 2014 for a Recognition Campaign, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries unanimously. That concludes our regular business items for this evening. Is there anyone for good of the order this evening? Seeing everyone packing up, I assume the answer's no. We are adjourned at 9:01.
Thanks for hanging up.
Tina?
I didn't know it was going to turn out. I didn't really didn't know. It was so easy. I'm glad you could break it up.